Call to order, the Calistoga Planning Commission's regular meeting for January 22nd, 2020. Before we move forward, we need to have a swearing in of our new Commissioner and our returning Commissioners.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I stand your name.
Hi, Timothy Wilks.
I solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
That I take. This obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you can sign those ults so that we can get that document. Thank you. Welcome aboard. Welcome back.
Yes, and welcome back, Commissioner McNair and Commissioner Wilks, and welcome aboard, Commissioner Allen. A pleasure and glad to see your board. Thank you. Moving on then, I guess we'll have a formal roll call.
I noted for the record that all Commissioners, old and new, are in attendance.
Great, thank you. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to D, adoption of the meeting agenda. I believe we have a minor correction.
Public comments first. Public comments.
Did I miss public? No. Oh, public comments, I did. I'm getting in a hurry. Yeah. I come out of the chute fast here on the new year. Okay. Public comments are an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items of interest to the public that do not appear on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes. The Commission cannot consider any issues or take action on items raised during public comments. It is open if anyone has anything they'd like to say. Please feel free to come forward. Quiet crowd tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to adoption of the meeting agenda. Yes?
I'd like to request that item J, acknowledgement of outgoing Commissioner's service be removed. That was an inadvertent holdover from the previous agenda.
We've had a moment. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Moving on to E, communications and correspondence.
None received that were directed to the Planning Commission.
Great, thank you. Consent calendar, minutes of approval, draft minutes from December 11th, 2019. Does anyone have any comments, any deletions, corrections? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. We run along to new business, election of 2020 Planning Commission officers. I will open the floor to any Commissioners to nominate.
I would like to nominate our Chairman Coats for another term as our Chairman.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
None? Thank you. And I would, if I may, like to nominate Commissioner Wilks to continue his service as Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to public hearings. H1, update of the infrastructure element of the Calistoga General Plan, GPA 2019-1. Consideration of a recommendation to the City Council to amend the infrastructure elements to update information on city water supply and service, wastewater collection and treatment, stormwater collection and discharge, and local geothermal resources and issues, along with updates to related goals, policies, and actions.
Well done. Thank you, Chair and Commission. Public Works Department and the Planning Department have been plugging along on an update of the infrastructure element of the Calistoga General Plan. It was last updated in 2003, and as anyone familiar with the goings-on in Calistoga knows that there's been quite a few changes to water, wastewater, and storm drains, which are the three topics that the infrastructure element addresses. So, yeah, basically, water supply and service, wastewater collection, treatment and recycling, and stormwater collection and discharge. Just before we get... No, go back one? Thank you. I'm sorry. So, since 2003, when the last element was adopted, there have been significant improvements in our water infrastructure. Just briefly, the one and a half million gallon storage tank on top of Mount Washington, the recently completed million gallon storage tank at Fage. We've replaced two water delivery pump stations. We've initiated a backflow prevention program, which prevents contaminated water from getting back into our water system, and we have required annual testing program set up for that. And we've also replaced water lines to Kimball Reservoir and Fage Canyon. And so, before I get into how we're looking with our water supply and our projected water supply, I'd just like to go over briefly what water demand looks like. There's... It's usually expressed in acre-feet per year. You'll see that throughout the draft element. And just to give you an idea, a single-family house with one to three bedrooms uses .428 acre-feet per year. So that just gives you a general idea. One with four bedrooms or more is a little more than half an acre foot per year. Then it goes all the way down to something more water-intensive, like a restaurant, which uses .58 acre-feet per year per thousand square feet of restaurants. So, just wanted to give you a little idea. And guest units, lot for transient lodging, use .17 acre-feet per year. So, we use these calculations all the time when we're assessing water connection and wastewater connection fees on new projects. And so, getting into what the situation looks like, back in 2002, which was the basis for the 2003 infrastructure element, the water demand projection for 2015, which obviously has passed us, was 1,191 acre-feet of water per year. That was going to be the total water need for the city and some of the customers we serve outside the city limits. The actual demand in 2015 was 686, substantially lower than that. And what's really interesting is that we now stand at 656 acre-feet, which is even less than 2015, and the demand for water has decreased by 36% since 2002. So you can see the 2002 demand was a little over 1,000, and now we stand at 656 acre-feet. So clearly, the 2003 infrastructure element didn't factor such items as... into the equation as the extensive conservation efforts that have been undertaken by the city and many of its residents and businesses. The installation of low-flow water fixtures, cash-for-grass, and substantial recycled water use of between 250 and 360 acre-feet per year, which is the equivalent of kind of Kimball Reservoir supply, as well as rate increases are an incentive to cut back on water use. So, we're at a place that, back in 2002, they didn't envision we were going to be in terms of water demand. So just looking forward to potential development by 2035, this was the kind of guesstimate of development that could occur by then, and we used this when we were doing the Development Impact Fee Study back in 2014. So this was our best guess about six years ago. It shows 62 potential single-family units, 140 multifamily, 15 ADUs, 155 guest units, 173,000 square feet of commercial, 5,000 square feet of restaurant, and one winery. Again, these aren't specific projects, but when we looked at the availability of properties, zoning, and just what our best guess was looking to 2035, this is what we came up with. So if we take that amount of development into account, the remaining supply would be around 300 acre-feet per year. And by the way, that also takes into account the 194 that we currently have reserved for standby and allocations that have already been given, for example, to the two resort projects that are under construction. Before I move on from water, I would just like to give a shout-out to our new Commissioner who caught a mistake in our calculations on what the supply is and what the water availability is, and really appreciate it. We inadvertently dropped out all of Kimball Reservoir, so makes the numbers look much better. And that will be corrected in the version that goes to the City Council. So moving on to wastewater, again, major changes, primarily in the regulatory arena, as well as improvements that we've done because of regulations at the federal, state, and regional level that have been enacted since 2003. The city has been required to reduce and avoid point source pollutants in wastewater, eliminate bypasses from the wastewater spray fields where we discharge the treated wastewater, reduce inflow and infiltration into the sewer lines, which increases the amount of sewage going to the plant. We are now metering geothermal discharges. We have to meet stricter discharge requirements and require to relocate and line the riverside storage ponds, which three of you participated in that review at the last meeting, I believe. So, next slide. And so, in order to address these regulations and requirements, we've done many significant improvements, replaced a mile-long trunk line and various sewer lines. We've done manhole replacement and rehabilitation, constructed a 16 million gallon recycled water storage pond, metered geothermal discharge from major dischargers, and install mud separators. We're doing smoke testing to identify inflow point sources, and we're repairing the lines when we find smoke coming out of a line. And we've also replaced the Pine Street Lift Station. So in terms of wastewater treatment capacity, our current capacity is 232 acre-feet, and then taking into account the projected guesstimated growth through 2035, we would have remaining capacity of 140 acre-feet, again, taking into account everything we reserved for projects that still aren't online or have standby allocations. So what we're recommending is that the geothermal element, which is all of four pages and is not a required element by the state, be incorporated basically into the infrastructure element. It now very much relates to wastewater and the quality of the wastewater. And in 2003, it was seen as a very valuable resource, which it is, but it didn't really have any limitations on its usage. And it was, you know, also trying to preserve the supply of volcanic ash that is used at the mud baths, which have been shown to include contaminants that contribute to our problems, you know, the contamination at the wastewater treatment plant. So some of the changes, circumstances that have changed regarding disposal of geothermal waters, we can no longer directly discharge anything that's come into contact with bodies. So basically, spas, swimming pools, they can't go into the storm drain. Then protection of the geothermal water supply, now there have been advances in reinjection technologies that provide a closed-loop heat exchanger system. So a lot of the geothermal water being used by the resorts and spas are being repurposed and reinjected and not discharged into the system. And then again, the use of volcanic ash, new spas or significant remodels are now required to install mud separators, and they're encouraged to use alternate treatment materials and not necessarily the volcanic ash. And I looked around on some of the web pages today to see, and several spas, in fact, don't use the volcanic ash.
Lynn, I got a question. Where does the geothermal wastewater go if not into the storm drain?
It can go into the sewer system. Has to go into the sewer system if it comes into body contact. So we're trying to diminish that, and we have to treat it at the other end, so. So, as I mentioned, what we're recommending is that we have incorporated a lot of the geothermal considerations and preserving the resource as important to the community into the infrastructure element itself. So we're recommending that you recommend to the City Council that it be... the element essentially be rescinded and that it would just become part of the infrastructure element. So, that's just, you know, I'm just trying to zoom through it. It's a pretty complicated... This is probably the most complicated, besides circulation, most complicated element of the general plan, and it was definitely time to update it. So we're trying to give you an overview of what the situation is.
One quick clarification. When you mentioned, for instance, the 2035 water projections of need, and then you said that the resorts have been taken into account, that means that their allocations are in excess of what that planned amount is?
Right. Those have already been taken out of what the demand...
So that's in addition to that number?
Well, if you wanted to add it to our acre-feet, but they're not available.
For instance, you said, you know, the plan is for an additional 5,000 square feet of restaurants.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Well, that isn't... Those two resorts are going to have 5,000 square feet of restaurants.
Yeah, no, no, no. That would be in addition to those resorts and anything else that we've given an allocation to.
So on that chart, I think you mentioned it was done a few years ago. Is there a comparison on what has been developed according to that plan that you put in that chart there?
The chart?
Yeah. Your forecast of that chart there?
Oh. You know, actually, there's been very minimal... This is actually adjusted from the one... Thank you for bringing that up, for the one we used in 2014. So this reflects...
So this reflects 2019?
Yeah.
What already has been developed?
Well, or... And we never included the two resorts in the projections because we knew those were going to happen.
So this has been updated to 2019?
Yeah. And honestly, there hasn't been that much that's occurred in the last five years.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Any other questions of staff? This is a public hearing, so I will...
And we have our former Public Works Director here.
We do.
And City Manager, answer any technical questions?
More than willing to answer questions, I'm sure.
I do have one question on the storm water. The... In the element was Goal I-5. What are we... There were some concerns, I think, in the element about our storm drain capacity. What are we doing to address the action? The action items were A-51-1 and A-51-2.
So we've done a couple of... Good evening, Mike Kern, City Manager, former Public Works Director. So we've done several things. Probably most importantly is some very significant piping out by the fairgrounds. So if you recall, about three years ago, maybe four years ago, Grant Street was torn up pretty significantly. There's a 54-inch storm drain that was put in at that time, and then it basically terminated right at the golf course. There's an open ditch that goes across the golf course and deadheads into the racetrack. That pipe and the pipe under the racetrack were undersized to handle the 100-year storm event. This last two years ago, we replaced the pipe that went under the racetrack with two 48-inch pipe. So it's twin pipes going under the racetrack, and then it went into a junction box and then tied into an existing storm drain and now discharges to the river. So the combined capacity of those improvements has really helped some localized flooding that was occurring at Grant Street and Michael and in the Mora area. We've also stepped up our maintenance program. I've heard it called Diablo Ditch, but it's the ditch that comes from the backside of the Mobile Home Park, drains off part of the mountain, from kind of that south portion of town. That gets pretty choked up with tulips and overgrowth, beaver dams. So every two to three years, we go in there and we hog that out significantly. We do have a master plan that calls for installing storm drains in lots of open-ditch areas. That will prob... We probably need to update that because the Regional Board and Fish and Game, or Fish and Wildlife, frowned very significantly on culverting open ditches, to the point where it's no longer economically feasible or environmentally feasible to do so. And when I say that, what I mean by that is, for every foot of culvert that I put in, I need to replace it with three feet of open ditch somewhere else. So it's a three-for-one mitigation, and we just don't have enough room to go make these mitigation banks to create that riparian corridor environment that they want to see. So the best thing we can do going forward is basically maintain what we have and look where there may be an undersizing of an existing structure and upsize that and just call it maintenance.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to come up, feel free to do so. Golly, no one? I figured somebody'd have a great question for you, Mike. Guess not. I think you probably could. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion, and we will entertain a motion to... I guess it's a motionable item, to send this to the Council.
May I ask, Lynn, one last question?
Yes, you may.
Lynn, is this your general plan spawn song for us?
Yeah, I didn't quite get through all of them, but I got through a good bit of them.
Good to know. All right.
Open for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending to the City Council adoption of the updated infrastructure element of the Calistoga General Plan and rescission of the geothermal element.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Painless. Okay, moving on to H2 and... Excuse me. H2, Crystal Geysers Water Company. I need to abstain from this. My office is within 500 feet of the Crystal Geysers, and as well as... Excuse me. I'm going to leave you G3 as well. I said H. I stand corrected, H3, because I'm also within 500 feet of that request for variance, so...
You have to move.
Oh, I have to move. Make it easier on everybody. So I will be leaving by state mandate, and I will turn it over in the capable hands of Vice Chair Wilks, and thank you very much.
So, item number two is the Crystal Geyser Water Company Use Permit, File 2019-10, and Design Review, File DR 2019-7. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners. I have for you tonight a use permit and design review application for Crystal Geyser Water Company at 501 Washington Street. The subject parcel of this project, it's a 1.8-acre parcel fronting Washington Street. Brief history or background of the property is the plant opened down there on Lower Washington approximately 1978. It was expanded in 1985 to its current size. Crystal Geyser is a water bottling plant. The vast majority of the water that they bottle on site is trucked in. They do use a small amount of water from wells that they have on their properties. Most of their truck traffic that they generate is either the water that's being trucked in, or there's approximately six to seven trucks a day that are coming in related to actually empty bottles to be filled by the water that's being trucked in. The proposed project would add about 9,000 square feet of space to the existing plant. It would relocate tanks and equipment from the Washington Street frontage to the rear along Camp Drive. It would provide a building addition along Washington Avenue for their blow molding equipment. This blow molding equipment would take, what I understand, our small little plastic pellets and expand them to full-size bottles through the use of that equipment. This would, according to the applicant, reduce truck trips going to the plant by up to six trucks a day on average. It would also add one full-time, high-skilled employee and possibly some job changes to some other employees on site. There's another expansion that's proposed as part of this project that's at the rear along Camp Drive. That expansion would be primarily for storage and a maintenance shop. Looking at this, it does... Staff's opinion is this is consistent with the general plan's land use designation for the industrial district. It would be consistent with the zoning code. I would note that in the industrial district where this is located, development standards are largely set by use permit. There are no clear-cut standards with the exception of height and lot coverage, which this proposal would comply with. A noise study was done for this project because it was anticipated by the applicant that some of the machinery and the relocation of equipment might generate some noise. The noise study found that with acoustic continuation in the form of a 10-foot fence along Camp Drive, some landscaping and some ongoing monitoring, that it would fully account for and attenuate the noise that's expected. An applicant did then incorporate that into their project description. All of the lighting for the project would be downward-facing in design so as not to impinge on any of the neighboring properties. There would be some landscaping incorporated into the project along the Camp Drive and Washington Street frontages. I would note that the expansion that is planned along the rear of the property along Camp Drive is in the flood zone, and they would be required at building permit submittal to either demonstrate that they are adequately flood-proofing the building in conformance with the municipal code and FEMA regulations, or alternatively seek a variance from that requirement from the City Council. And again, the draft resolution has conditions incorporated into it related to that. Another thing that's part of this application is the interim relocation of some equipment during construction. As this is an active plant and they want to keep it active while they are doing their additions and moving things around, they have a proposal, and it's described in the staff report in the attachments of where they would move some of that equipment around to during that interim. What they're expecting is approximately a three-month time period if they did get your approval to move forward with this project. I do want to just emphasize, the applicant has held a couple of public meetings talking about a larger expansion on their neighboring property at 505 Washington. They've talked about possibly including a tasting room for water in that. That's not this application. That's a future project that they're working on. But I did mention it in the staff report, and I did want to mention it here because there's obviously been a lot of information about that bigger project that they're working on, but this is a separate project and a separate application. That project would, if it moves forward, would require a lot of additional sequoia studies because of the nature of that site, and there would, of course, be public hearings, and they'd come back to you for that, of course, as well. With that, again, there is a draft resolution for a design review and a use permit in front of you with a number of draft conditions. With that, I will try to answer your questions. Some may be more appropriate for the applicant. Doug Wada from Crystal Geysers here, as well as Rex Ramsey, who's the lead architect on this project. I'm sure they'd be happy to answer your questions as well. Thank you.
Do any of the Commissioners have questions of staff?
I do. Is it correct that the landscaping and beautification of Washington Street is proposed as being deferred to Phase 2?
So they have some pretty... With their water tasting room in Phase 2, and that's where this gets a little muddy, they have some pretty expansive ideas for how they want to re-landscape and reconstruct that whole stretch of their Washington Street frontage. I think there's like a trellis and arbor and trees and a whole bunch of things planned. They're still working on some different easements, so they don't have the exact designs of that. We've incorporated a condition requiring landscaping as part of this project, subject to review and approval by city staff, if that's acceptable to the Planning Commission. Probably looking at some trees and some shrubbery, and there is some landscaping that'll be required as part... And there is some landscaping that'll be required as part of the mitigation recommendations that are found in the acoustic continuation document as well.
And that makes sense because Phase Two, we don't have a timeline, so deferring the landscaping and beautification would be real challenging without a actual project.
Absolutely. Phase Two is a separate project and it's entirely possible it never gets out of the ground.
And as usual, you have asked one of my questions now.
Gotcha.
But I will be having a suggestion towards that. Are there any other questions, staff?
Has everybody, any public comments about the noise that this may, the noise study?
You know, I've had some questions. You know, I've, all projects that come before you guys, we get a lot of questions about. I can't think of anything specific about this project in terms of noise. But, you know, in discussions with folks, we have discussed the noise attenuation and the noise study that was done.
Have the neighbors been notified of the potential increase in activity and noise?
You know, not specifically to noise. This is a public hearing, so it was noticed out to everyone within 300 feet. And the staff report and the noise study have been available to folks to review.
Okay. This might be a question more for them, but how many hours a day will the new bottling line operate?
Yeah, let's, we can wait till we, let's wait till we open the public hearing and then we'll get there. One question I have is that in, on the flood zone, the construction that will occur within the flood zone, assuming that they floodproof the building, typically in an industrial-type building, that also requires breakaways. Is that the plan here?
I know there's language in our ordinance related to flood zones for breakaways for certain items. I can't say with certainty which items that would apply to or if that would apply to just the equipment that's outside. I know the intent of the waterproofing of the building would be that so no water, you know, enters the building, so I don't think there would be requirements for breakaways of equipment inside the building.
Well, the problem is, is that if the building is waterproof, then the water that would typically flow there is being diverted somewhere else. And being diverted somewhere else in this case could be across the street into homes.
So the documents that I've reviewed pertaining to the flood zone, and again, this would come up if they did request a variance, and we'll be reviewing this as part of the building permit if this is approved tonight, is that it's a six-inch difference of height for water. And the conclusions of the engineers are that it would not affect materially any of the surrounding properties in terms of flood heights or anything like that. And that's one of the requirements that we have to certify before we can sign off on that.
Is that based on a calculation or a, gee, I don't think it's going to be a problem?
It's calculations.
Okay. All right. Any, no other questions? If there are none, I will open the public hearing. And if the applicant could speak first, that would be great.
Good evening, Vice Chair Wilks and Planning Commission, city officials of Calistoga. My name is Doug Wade. I'm affiliated with Crystal Geyser Water Company as a project manager overseeing this project. I'd like to also introduce Rex Ramsey. He's the architect in charge of this project. If there are any questions, we'll do our best to answer them.
Does anyone hear other questions?
How many hours a day will the bottling line be operating?
The bottling line operates 24 hours a day, typically five days a week. Seasonally, we do go to six days and we have gone to seven days.
Okay. I've got a few questions. There's, in your description relative to the fencing, you described that you will be constructing a redwood fence. Is that correct? That's what it says.
I would like to have Rex answer that question.
Sure, if you would. State your name.
Rex Ramsey, Architect. Thank you, Vice Chair Wilks and the team. The fence was designed initially as an architectural element and it is out of two-by wood materials. And it also is with tube steel, six-by-six posts, up to, I believe, 10 feet is what we have it at. And so it is a very substantial architecturally-designed fence.
So, so my concern was this. My concern was, does that mean it's a chain-link fence with redwood slats? It sounds like that is not the case.
No, it is, it is actually layered two-by-twos overlapped each other so that there's no gaps or in any of the fence.
Right.
You cannot see through the fence.
As a point of comparison, this morning, I, you know, I'm very familiar with your facility physically. And I went over to remind myself about the Calistoga Mineral Water Company, which even though it is no longer active, is still meticulously maintained. But, but looking at some of the things existing there in terms of requirements that they had and complied with, one of the things was at the point where their outdoor tanks are, the tanks being 16 feet tall, the fence adjacent to it is 16 feet tall. You now have installed tanks along your property line on the backside of Camp Drive and your proposal is to construct a 10-foot fence. And my concern is, shouldn't it be a full-height fence, 16 feet, at the location surrounding where those tanks are? And specifically, I will ask you, and this is, this is a concern, and I will say it's not shared just by myself in the city, it's shared by a number of people, is that you start things and you don't finish. Last year, you had these tanks put in and by apparently your description, that's finished. And that's not finished.
That entire area is still under, there's still additional pipes, tanks, equipment to go into that area. The fence has not been installed that goes around that area, so that...
The stuff that's stuck on the tanks and which is now coming off and blowing through the neighborhood?
We've had some issues related with the tank manufacturer and those are getting resolved, so.
Okay. You see where I'm going here?
Not entirely, but it is an active work project, so, but we can certainly address any of those matters.
Okay. The timelines and things, projects like this that have already been done, aren't finished, haven't been finished in the past. And so the, we'll come back, as my, probably my biggest concern tonight is if we approve this and allow you to go forward, is it going to be finished if things like the landscaping just sort of doesn't get done? And so we will be talking about this more, but I think it would behoove you, on behalf of your neighbors at the least, to try to address these things that aren't done. Last week, you, your people went out to make some maintenance things on the well sites outside your fence, and it was going to be done that day. Well, this picture was taken yesterday and you still have the steel plate. This is where everybody parks who lives on that street. So, again, it's going to be done today? No, it didn't get done. So these are concerns that I think that don't address necessarily a design, but address your process of how things go forward. So, having clarified the issue of the redwood fence, the, the other thing that I would like to bring up, and it's alluding to the previous comment, that the landscaping that you are proposing for the possible expansion of the full project, obviously part of that landscaping would then be in front of what I would call this parcel, which is what this construction is. I don't see any reason why you couldn't potentially do a prototypical design for your title expansion and incorporate the construction in this parcel of that now. Is that something that you would concur with?
We have completed the design, the conceptual design for the entire length of that project. That was submitted during the public, it wasn't a hearing, it was a public meeting that Crystal Geyser Water completed. It ties in with, you have the blow molding expansion. It also ties in with the design of the water tasting room and it will continue on down the street.
Well, again, my question was, is there any reason that that portion of that fencing couldn't be built in front of this parcel as in, and be incorporated in this project?
Okay. The improvements that are anticipated in front of the blow molding expansion on Washington is, is the design of a trellis structure and planting of that structure. And we were proposing to complete that all at one time, all along the frontage.
Would you be interested and willing to consider completing a portion of that work with, for this parcel ahead of the future phase?
I can make those recommendations to the client, but the client is the one that has to make the decisions. And yes, it is possible.
Well, we may revisit that as a condition. The other thing is that, is that the language is stated for that landscaping to come back for essentially a staff review. And I'm leaning towards a condition, not only that this be constructed for this parcel now, but that it come back to the commission separately as, as a landscape element, understanding that it's going to become a bigger project, anticipating that it's going to become a bigger project. So that will be an additional condition that I'm going to be looking at. To clarify one thing, and this was some confusion, I know, with some of the neighbors. In the language of talking about your temporary loading dock that you'll be doing during this construction.
Yes.
When you described it as the northwest corner of the property, and of course, if I looked at that, I looked at the northwest corner of this parcel and thought, well, that's not going to work. Your trucks are going to be out in the middle of Washington Street. So to clarify, it is actually the northwest corner of the other parcel?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. The landscaping that you are proposing along Camp Drive, that will be landscaping, you will install irrigation? Yes?
Yes.
And, and take care of the maintenance of that?
Yes.
Okay. And that is your understanding? Okay.
And that was a condition of the administrative use permit. And we submitted design documents for that as far as what the plantings and the trees were going to be.
Okay.
And so what, what was deferred for the, was, the fence was deferred until the completion of phase of this particular project. So we didn't complete the fence as a part of that project because this project was coming along. Getting equipment in and out of that area is difficult at best, especially when we're trying not to use Camp Drive for that installation. We're trying to bring in all the equipment, everything else from the Crystal Geyser Water property side. The well maintenance that you see is just delayed for parts. They were actually working on it today, and that was an unexpected maintenance and timeframe element. Part of our discussions today in preparation for the meeting was to be ensure that, you know, we continue to keep the neighbors apprised of all the projects and what we're working on to the best of our ability. And maybe we need to step that up.
Well, I, that, and that raises an interesting question. It's, it's pretty clear that a while ago, you, you installed, I will call it what amounts to like a tough shed without going to the city and permitting that. It has electrical in it and has, and is filled with potentially hazardous materials. And you've been asked by the city to get that in order and you've done nothing to date. And, and how have you notified the neighbors about that?
I don't know that we, we can notify the neighbors, but what we have completed and in discussions with the last meeting that we have, and, let me kind of back up a little bit further because a year and a half ago, we started in on this project and it was a new administration and a new team, both on the design side, on the administration side. And we've worked diligently and very, and I think we've worked, been real happy with our, with the city team. We're currently having monthly meetings with the city. So the first Tuesday of every month, we have a meeting to go over what's going on, what we need to do. And that's part of the planning process. The building department is there, the fire department is there, and this has been cooperatively instituted by all the team members.
Well, that's interesting that you went ahead and installed the shed and Gee didn't mention it?
That was a mistake on the contractor's part and that is being corrected. What we're doing at this point in time is my company has completed preliminary drawings on that. We're completing any remediation. We need some anchor bolts to tie it down. We need to prepare the electrical drawings. Those are in process. Probably will be available to the city within a week. We were hoping to be at it a little bit sooner, but we are aggressively pursuing that. The fire department has asked us to and we're doing that. Anything that we're doing on that site, we are securing a building permit for.
All right. Well, I, this commission has heard me say innumerable times before that there are those who ask for permission and there are those who ask for forgiveness. And right now, you're coming down in my forgiveness camp. And that is no way to conduct a business. So as we move forward, let's think about all of those things and, and see if, see if some remediation can be accomplished prior to going forward with the new project. Other than that, you know, in terms of your architecture and things, I mean, I think it'll be an improvement, but, but I think that it's, but I still think that there's some things we don't know and we need to focus on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alyssa?
I'm not sure which one of you is best equipped to answer my question, but we've talked about screening and visual and noise concerns, downlighting and hours and all of those things. My question is about if you could explain what type of air scrubbers or air quality monitoring systems will accompany this new installation to ensure that the project doesn't have a negative impact on the air quality of the area and the area downwind?
There was a question that came in to the city today regarding the type of operation. And as an explanation, the blow moldings, they do not manufacture any plastics at that facility. And I brought an example. And essentially what they do is they take a little preform like this, it's already man, the plastic item is manufactured off-site. This goes into a machine and is heated and expanded with compressed air to form the bottle. There is no outgassing from any of that production process. The existing facility has no emissions. There won't be any emissions from the new one. What we're, what we're emitting is heat. And there's a lot of air, a lot of mechanical air conditioning systems that have to go in because of the amount of heat that it takes to preform these. So in essence, we're reducing a number of truck traffic trips by going from a full-size empty bottle to where we can get into, you know, a lot of these, I think a ratio of six to one on the trucks. But there are no more emissions. Also, the, the site has to comply with county standards, also has to comply with the air quality control board. All of those will, will go part of, more than, with any of the other elements, but, so we don't have any hazardous materials coming on site for this project, other than the very minor chemicals it takes to clean up, treat the water and the appropriate disposition of that, of any chemicals.
Are there, does the Commissioner?
Yeah, I had one question. I, first of all, appreciate you making the effort to hold the public meetings. Are there, to the best of your recollection, any other concerns from the community that have not been addressed within the conditions for this application, pending any public comments, of course?
Let me kind of explain how we need to still address some of those items, and they have to be affected during the design process. For instance, there was a concern with the, the type of lighting that was around the site and how it was being broadcast... site and how it was being broadcast into the neighborhood. Our criteria for this building and any other building is to have sharp cutoff light fixtures so we don't pollute over the property lines. Lighting will be very important to us. We had a meeting today with the plant, and they're concerned with some of the safety aspects that they have on the backside of the property. They will be going in for a permit, but it will be a criteria that the light fixtures won't be above the fence line when it's completed. They will only be on by motion sensors. The color and the quality of the light, we're looking at like a 2,700 Kelvin light fixture versus a real bright, brilliant 4,000. So in the in a simple application they need to do next week, they'll get an electrical permit for that installation and in order to get those that safety lighting in the back of the property. So we have to go back through, and while there's statutory items, we're also taking a look at all those items that we got from the public meetings, and they were very good, you know. We took particular effort on the character and the style of the buildings. We're screening the equipment the best that we can without exceeding the height limitations in a heavily landscaped site to make it more presentable. So it's more of a part of the community than it is just serving the.
Yeah, and that makes a big difference in, of course, moving this through the process.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
I've got I've got one comment. I agree with with comments of the other commissioners here, and this is a comment, not a question. You are asking a lot of the city to approve something like this, and you're bringing one job with with everything you're doing. And I know this is not part of the planning per se, but I mean, this community would like to have more jobs outside of hospitality, and this is an opportunity to do that, and you're only bringing one job when asking quite a bit of the city to concede and allow you to bring in this this bottling line and and the plastics and redo, you know, and so I would like to see additional jobs that are benefited and that are skilled and skilled work that's above minimum wage, so.
Again, it's not a question, it's a comment.
Yeah, it's a comment, yeah, okay.
If you're if if there are no more questions, let's continue the public hearing and see if anyone else has anything I'd like to reserve to ask you back if questions come up?
Certainly, yes, I'm here to help.
Okay, does anyone else have comment?
Good evening, Planning Board. Good evening, Zach, Lynn. My name is David Ross. I'm the resident here of Calistoga, and congratulations to Mr. Allen and Ms. McNair. Five years I spent chasing the Planning Board in Alameda. I'm familiar with what you do, and I'm grateful that you were willing to give your time to the city. You are heroes in every sense of the word. It's a tough job. I'm glad you do it. I wouldn't want to. Question for the engine, the architect, is there an estimated cost for this project?
I'm not allowed.
Can't get that information. And again, one job?
You address the questions to the chair, and then the chair can follow up.
Yeah, I I don't certainly don't know what it and you've heard you've heard the applicants answer clearly when they apply for a building permit, they have to state a value.
Yeah.
And I assume that that has not been submitted yet.
I don't believe there's a value attached.
So at some point, it will be public knowledge, but not until the building permit application is.
Thank you. And then the second question I have, again, for the Crystal Geyser, are you currently using Alston as your contractor?
Okay.
So the answer to that is yes.
Yes. Do you have a comment about that?
I will reserve that for another meeting.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment.
Does anyone else have any comments? Yes, come forward.
I'm Catherine Labrie. I live at Chateau Calistoga, and I guess I would live a quarter of a mile away across the glider port.
Mm-hmm.
It's really loud 24 hours a day. I hear you running. Is the new improved plant going to be louder? You know, because it's pretty loud now. I hear it 24 hours a day. My one question is, will it be louder than it is now? And another question is, how about the light pollution during construction? Lights shine like headlights a quarter of a mile across the glider port that shot the lights that shine on the trucking aspect around the top perimeter of the building. And, you know, I have to put curtains up. It's like headlights a quarter of a mile away. It's just I find that unusual. And when they work to the kind of behind where the ball field is to the left, and they'll maybe be drilling or things at night, they have headlights or, you know, spotlights shining that shine a quarter of a mile across the glider port. I don't know why they don't have a barrier. You know, there's no reason for them to shine if they're working on some project in front of them. I understand the need for lighting, but I don't know why I need to see their lighting. And so lighting and noise, and again, the comments about not any more jobs. Six trucks per day is, you know, that's nice that they're doing that amount of reduction, but it's not really huge amount of less traffic, just six trucks. And when they go to phase two, what will the increase in business be then? Are the increase of traffic be with phase two? So are we, you know, we're decreasing six trucks now, but perhaps, you know, what's the future hold with phase two? And so do you get a phase one? Does that guarantee a phase two? So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. A couple of points to staff. The is there is there outdoor construction work during the night? At night? Is there outdoor truck loading and things like that? Are there temporary lights being?
So through the chair, I can't say to their loading or unloading what time of day exactly that occurs currently. As to construction, we do have limitations on when construction occurs.
Right.
It's essentially daylight, daytime hours, so lighting during construction shouldn't be an issue. That's something our building official and folks who are, you know, inspecting the project will monitor. And if I may, as to the question about noise, if I understand the noise study correctly, there won't be any additional noise impacting beyond the property line as a result of this project.
Yeah. And just anecdotally, I've actually spoken to people who live within a block and have and are their noise was not one of their major concerns. Let's put it that way. They were more concerned with just sort of the stuff lying around. But I understanding that that the requirements for this project will require downlighting, keeping in mind, this is a dark skies city. That would be if lighting issues come up, that would be something for enforcement.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have a comment?
If it's a dark skies city, why is it so light out right now at night? Crystal Geyser, because where I live, it's not dark skies at night. So, thank you.
So I can answer that, chair, or at least attempt to answer that. We have we have a lot of nonconforming lighting in town that predates our dark sky policies. All new lighting going forward is required to be dark sky, but but and as people replace lighting, we get them to comply with dark sky.
Well, is it fair to say that that with the completion of this project, this entire existing facility will comply?
I can't say that with 100% certainty, but I think the vast majority of their lighting can or will be brought into conformance.
Let's ask the applicant. Is that will that be the case?
We would conform to all the city ordinance, including the dark sky lighting ordinance.
So if that, yeah, if that required is some modification of existing lights that you have there now, that could be you would be compliant with that being done during this project, as part of this project?
For the existing lighting?
For the existing lighting.
Let me, at the completion, we'll I'll have to review some of those existing light fixtures on the only remaining two walls that will remain as a part of this project. On the street side, any lighting that's out there at the current plant area, the operating area, that will be removed, and new lighting will be reinstalled.
Okay.
And we won't need the operational type lights that you see along Washington Street at that time. On the backside of the property, we will need to meet the requirements for all the night sky lighting plus we can't approach over the property line. So there's some statutes that we have to conform to. In fact, in in the application, we had to submit the lighting levels that are going to be on site.
Right.
And and how they're dispersed, and that I think that's in the report. So we're we're working to adhere to all of the statutes. So we can assess what's on the truck loading dock side at this point in time and what would be on the the west or the the Camp Drive site and see what lighting is out there at this point in time and work to have that in conformance at the end of phase one.
Well, I and I will then I I think that it would be fair to ask that it sounds like the majority of your lighting will be either replaced or will be just new by itself. So I I'm going to suggest and ask that that whatever existing lighting is scheduled to remain, that it be made compliant, if it is not now compliant, with with the city's ordinances on dark sky and and be, you know, downcasting lights. So let's let's just count on that.
I'm kind of a stickler for technical. One, rather than necessarily replacing the existing light fixtures in in stat in where they're at, we may want to relocate them lower and in a different position.
Yeah, again, making them compliant.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's not you don't have to replace the fixtures, but they but if we can bring the entire property into compliance.
Okay.
That will be that will be a good move.
Yeah.
And hopefully, that will help with your issue over Chateau Calistoga. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Come come up, please, state your name.
My name is Marshall Seymour, and I'm representing the Bingham Ranch, which we are also neighbors, even though we're across the river. So we are directly behind this project across the Napa River, and it will affect us. So we've had a good meeting today with Doug and with Steve and with Carmen, and we appreciate their time. But we would like to register our concerns, which are noise pollution. We can hear in the summer somebody's radio on the other side of the Napa River. So this is not, you know, just because it looks like we're really far away. We're not, and it depends on how the wind is blowing. We are really struck by the senior center that went up across the river, which is absolutely huge visually. I'm going to take a picture tonight when I go back to see what the lighting is like, but we're used to having the night skies at the Bingham Ranch. It's always been the night skies, and it's it's not it's not anymore. It's really distressing to us. It's a property that has been in our family since 1882. My cousin Peter and I are the fifth generation operating this ranch. So this is important to us that we not lose what we've had. The other thing that we're concerned about is aesthetics. As you brought up, that was your first point, was the landscaping. What I'm noticing is that all the concern is for Washington Street and the west side of the building and not much concern for the back. And that's our concern is we don't want to see this. We don't want to hear it. We don't want to smell it, you know? And when it when it does expand to phase two, the possibility, all those possibilities are are great that we will definitely see. We would like screening. We don't think that a 10-foot fence is high enough. If you've got, and I may be wrong about this, I think I read 30-foot tanks. So a 10-foot screen, a 10-foot fence doesn't screen a 30-foot tank. And we would like to see landscaping, but it sounds it sounds like there are difficulties with promises and follow-through, and that that's really a concern of ours. Thank you.
Bingham Ranch has taken it from all sides in the past few months. All right, is would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public here. Oh, we have one more.
My name is Lauren Lugo. I'm more concerned with the aspect of pollution regarding single-use bottle production on site. I understand that it's going to be just expanding those. But I want to know what the air quality effects of heating up the plastic would be specifically and how you would mitigate that. Also, how would you dispose of the remnants from the production? I know that you're just going to be expanding them, but I am sure there would be some sort of waste as a result. And how would that contribute to greenhouse gases? I I hate to think of Calistoga as contributing to greenhouse gases at all. And then also, if it's in the floodplain, isn't there potential for pollution to the Napa River, because the Napa River is right there? I work at 509 Washington Street, next door to Paul's, and we have flood danger right there, so I know that this would also be in danger of flooding. Those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I think I think you've pretty well spoken to, obviously, air quality is something that comes under AQMD and and that that you need to be in compliance with that in the state, and it sounds like you there is not an issue with that. I will say that that sort of globally speaking, it's generally thought that in terms of the whole climate change issue, the more things that can be done in one place instead of driving stuff all over the place all the time, shipping it, is is better for the planet. That would lend to the thought that if they can if they can do part of the stuff with the bottles on site, that that would lend to that. But I think that there are regulatory processes outside of this commission that are state-controlled or federal-controlled that that will speak to your to your concerns.
Okay. Well, as I understood it, was going to be exempt from CEQA, so.
That doesn't mean it's exempt from existing law. That just is is exempt from a specific targeted analysis that that is out that is part of the environmental analysis. That doesn't mean that they're exempt from having to comply with this with state law.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Thoughts?
I think when I brought up the question of air quality, I was looking for an answer saying, we're not just going to meet the minimum standards, we're going to do better. And I was looking for, that's what I was personally hoping to hear, is that that we're going to be exploring bio resin-based plastic or. or, you know, something, we have to be mindful of the future and doing better with everything we do, not just meeting the minimum standards. So that's what I was looking to hear, um, when I asked that question myself. Um, that said, I think improvements on the project are welcome on, on the property. Um, beautification of the parcel, improving maintenance and all of, uh, the associated things with this, this project have a lot of potential as well as it sounds like there's, uh, the need to mitigate some past challenges, um, and follow-through on promises and, um, mitigating lack of prior follow-through perhaps. Um, I, I am concerned that it's, it's not fair to defer the required landscaping that's associated with this parcel. The project should be complete and whole of itself. We don't know if there's ever going to be a phase two or when phase two is going to happen. So I'm not comfortable deferring any portion of the required landscaping, beautification, sidewalk upgrades, um, that would be required of this project. They should all be encompassed as a part of this project if we are to proceed with it at this time.
Scott?
Well, I think this is a great example of members of the community voicing their concerns and giving the planning commission and staff the opportunity to address them the best that we can. Um, I don't know if making landscaping, uh, on the camp street side, uh, condition would be appropriate, but I think that's, uh, worth considering because there are, of course, folks who live on that side of the property. Uh, so I just appreciate members of the community coming up when they do. And of course, getting in front of these projects before it even gets to the planning commission is even better because that way we can address them, uh, within, within the staff report. Um, but I, I like the, uh, architecture, I appreciate the improvements. Um, I think it's a wonderful addition to the community and I encourage any sort of, uh, beneficial development in the future here. And I appreciate what you've done, uh, to address the various concerns as well. So thank you for that.
And keep in mind that the landscaping along camp is in their initial proposal. I think that, I think our concern is execution, not necessarily if. Um, Doug?
Yeah, I, I think you bring up the, the most valid point here, which is accountability, um, on and follow-through on what you say you're going to do. If we do give the, and you need to hear that and you need to listen to that. I think your, your points are extremely well-taken and you should take that to heart if we're going to move forward with this. Um, and, and, and hear the concerns of everyone in this room because I think they're real. The light pollution, um, the noise, that's why I asked if there were any prior comments about noise. I, I think they're real and you need to, we need to make sure that you're held accountable for what you're listening to in, in the room here.
Okay, I, um, I think you've heard a lot of my thoughts. I would like to run by the other commissioners. Uh, my, I'm proposing three conditions added to this approval. And I would like to see if there is concurrence on that. Um, the first one, which came up late in the discussion, was a condition to bring all of the, this parcel's lighting up to make it compliant with the local ordinances regarding dark skies and downcasting light.
Exterior lighting.
All, all exterior lighting, yeah.
Through the chair, I might, um, when we draft that condition, we will probably say something, uh, with dark sky policies found within the city. We don't have an explicit ordinance, but it's found there are policies in different planning documents within the city.
I think that that will be enough to work with and I think you're on board with that. But to make it compliant, not necessarily new. Um, the, the second one is the, um, I would propose that, that your total landscape design along Washington, along Camp Drive, uh, be brought forward to the planning commission for its own assessment and that it be included as a requirement under this project, um, so that the occupancy permit ultimately will be, will be, um, dependent on it being completed and functioning. Um, the third thing is, so those are two conditions I have. The third one is that I would like the redwood fence along Camp Drive adjacent to the, the water, the storage tanks to be 16 feet tall instead of 10. I know that's a challenge structurally, but, uh, it can be done.
And it shows on this elevation that those tanks are approximately 20 feet in the rendering?
Yeah, um, I know, I know from my own experience, getting beyond 16 gets into some real flagpole issues when, in wind and, uh, so it becomes a little bit of a challenge. Uh, it's already a little bit of a challenge. So that would be my proposal, would be 16 feet. Um, I'm open to amendment to that.
Would you be satisfied with any other type of screening? Like, uh, um, color coding the tanks so that they aren't shiny stainless? Or, you know, a dark tone rather than a white tone?
Honestly, I don't know if that can be done. I, certainly.
It seems a little odd, but the stainless steel tanks kind of work to our favor because they reflect the character and the colors around the area better than any other paint. So stainless steel is about the best you're going to get as far as any tank colors go. So they'll pick up and reflect some of the blue lights and the greens.
Well, typically when we're trying to disguise something, we go for non-reflective.
Right.
Yes.
And dark tones.
Um.
Things that are dark go away. Things that are light are in your face.
Um, because of the nature and the type of the tanks, we can't do much about the height.
Well, then it sounds like.
I, I think that we need to fence it. Okay, thank you. Um, so those would be three conditions and I, if, if any of the commissioners have an objection or wish to revise that, okay. Um, are you clear on the, on the concept there?
I think we're good.
Okay, all right. Um, incorporating those as conditions, would anybody like to make a motion? Hearing none, I will make a motion. Of course.
Just to be clear, the fence that you're requesting is only at the, where, along Camp Drive?
It's along Camp Drive on the, what I call the backside. In other words, adjacent to where your tanks are.
Those, that is not continuous. So I want to be clear in the perception that you're going to get is that Camp Drive stops along that property line.
Well, okay.
And we, and, or access to those, some of those areas and stuff, so.
As you, as you come off of Washington and you go south on Camp Drive and then the road, the drive turns left.
Yes.
And goes east, what I call east.
Yes.
And the tanks are along, adjacent to that eastern portion.
Yes.
That's where I'm talking about.
Okay. So it would continue all along Camp Drive?
So it's, in other words.
Yes.
Okay, the.
I want to point out.
Yeah.
I thought there was a map. Show the extent of it.
The physical improvements of Camp Drive stop roughly in this area.
Right.
They do not continue down. It, Camp Drive is actually a private piece of property.
Correct.
Um, so my question is, are we talking about the public side of Camp Drive is where you want the screening? Because this is an industrial piece of property.
I understand that, but, but it's also in, yes, I understand that. The, you have existing fencing, I believe it's six-foot fencing, along, adjacent to those tanks.
Yes.
Would you point to the tanks so everybody can see them?
Right in this area.
It's.
Okay. So there's existing chain-linked fence that separates.
Correct, you have chain-linked fence with redwood slats.
Yes.
Okay, the, the area that is adjacent to the tanks needs to, that's where we're talking about constructing a 16-foot barrier fence, um, to be able to disguise those tanks.
So this, this area in here, um, you're going to have these tanks and that's about the end of the public access.
I understand that, and that, so, and to make this more simple, this, I think you understand where I'm talking about. Is that correct?
What, what I'm trying to figure out is what, or the extent of what you want us to conceal or to mask.
The extent of is, is to build the 16-foot fence in, adjacent to where the tanks are.
So that they would be screened from across the river.
And would not be required to continue all the way down to the property line.
Through the chair, I might make a suggestion. If we're going to be bringing the landscaping back to you.
I was just going to mention that. You're going to be bringing this landscape back, so, so you'll have an opportunity to show the fence. And if it needs to be tweaked at that time, we, that's certainly something we can do. But I think that, I think staff understands where we're going with this. Um, and I, so I think that as you work with Zach, you, you'll be able to get to the right solution there.
Exact, exactly what I'm looking for is that we have some flexibility rather than a prescribed method, what we can actually do and.
Well, it may be prescribed, but it's going to be prescribed through Zach.
Yes, agreed. All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, um, so moving forward, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving use permit application, UP 2019-10 and design review application, DR 2019-7, with three conditions as I've described. Um, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. The. Take a minute here. The next item on our agenda is the, a setback variance, uh, file VA 2019-3 and design review, DR 2019-9. Consideration of a variance in design review application to allow the reconstruction of a five-unit apartment building at 800 Washington Street. Uh, may I have a staff review?
I need to recuse myself.
That's right, you need to recuse yourself.
So I need to leave? May I come back for commissioner comments?
You can come back.
Can someone grab me? Then I'm going to leave my stuff here, is that all right?
Got to take that good-looking thermos. Okay, staff review.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm, yes. Could you folks s, s, take your conversation outside, please?
You're ready for a staff report, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, um, so the application, as you noted, that you have before you tonight is for a variance in design review, um, for a five-unit residential structure at 800 Washington Street. Um, the current complex there has 13 units on a one-point, I believe it's, uh, on a relatively small property, a zone-high-density residential. Um, the, the front of the property is zone-community-commercial. However, the subject property is not in that zoning district. This is one of the rare parcels that is split between two zoning districts. Um, for the sake of this conversation, I'll only be referring to the R3 zoning standards. Uh, as I noted, that this project is not in the community-commercial aspect of, of that parcel. Um, this is a fairly, uh, older, um, multifamily complex. Over the last 10 years, the owner has come to the planning commission a couple times, um, uh, to get, uh, design review approvals to either completely replace and rebuild or substantially rehabilitate, um, all of the other existing buildings on the site, with the exception of Building C, which is the subject of tonight's application. Uh, Building C, currently it fronts Eddie Street. It's a one-story structure with five units, um, as I said, five units on one level. The current building is non-conforming in terms of setbacks and parking. Um, I would note, there was a small typo I noticed today when I was preparing for this on, um, page three of the staff report in the table. The current height of the existing Building C is not 25 feet, uh, being a one-story structure. It's actually about 12 or 13 feet.
So my red circle, that can be ignored.
Beat you to it, yes. Um, regardless, height is not an issue for either the current or proposed structure. Um, the, the old structure, um, it, it's in a state of disrepair. It's an older structure. Um, it's not particularly notable in terms of architecture. It's not on any of our lists as a historic resource in any, um, shape or form. The applicant proposes to replace the structure with a two-story building that would still have five units. Um, it would be slightly less non-conforming than the current building in terms of setbacks. Um, as, as I noted, um, parking is a big challenge on this site. The current development, in fact, has zero off-street parking. Um, under the current proposal, it would also be slightly less non-conforming in, in that they have included three tuck-under off-street parking spaces. Um, I think that's the primary motivat, motivation for going two stories. Plus it fits with the aesthetics of the other existing buildings on the site. Um, as I noted, this would reduce the setback non-conformities, add some off-street parking. It would bring the building to modern standards, um, and it would match all the other buildings in terms of architecture. And they're proposing to refresh the landscaping, um, on the site as well. Um, now, there are specific provisions in the zoning code that allow, um, an applicant to rebuild or replace a non-conforming residential structure if two conditions can be met. There's no reduction in the number of dwelling units. Um, so we're going from five units to a proposed five units. Um, and a variance must be approved for the, the variances in terms of development standards. Um, in this case, the small nature of the parcel, the previous approvals, um, for the reconstruction of the other buildings, I would note the other buildings did not have to go through this variance process. The way the code was written at that time, they only had to go through design review. Um, so this one's going through a little bit heightened review and approvals. Um, also, the similarity to other development in that neighborhood. There's a lot of two-story structures kind of in the lower Washington area that have pretty small or zero setbacks. It's a little bit more urban, um, in nature in that area. Um, and, uh, overall, as I said, the non-conformities are lessened. Uh, probably the biggest concern staff would have with this, again, is, is simply just the lack of parking down there. We have received at least one comment about, from air people in the area saying, hey, parking's pretty tight down there. Definitely would love it if there was a way to incorporate more off-street parking. Um, in this case, uh, I feel like the applicant has done a pretty good job of adding some off-street parking while maintaining the number of dwelling units. Um, again, this is also for a design review. The design review is consistent with the other buildings in the complex. Um, the colors and materials would largely match the other buildings in the complex. Um, it's consistent with the lower Washington character area overlay and is consistent with the design guidelines for multifamily, um, in the city of Calistoga. Um, we do have a draft resolution with conditions of approval. Uh, Bill Squire and his architect, Mary Sykes, I believe, are both here and would be, I'm sure, happy to answer any questions you may have and be happy to answer your questions as well.
Okay. Any questions from commission?
So the comments, a dramatic improvement. I'm, I'm glad to see what can be done.
Okay. Um, I have, well, one question, but I think it'll be best addressed to the, to the applicant. I will open the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
My name is Bill Squire, um, and I'm one of the owners of this, uh, property. Um, I'd like to thank the planning commissioners for serving. I won't be quite as effusive as, uh, the previous, uh, gentlemen, but I do appreciate, uh, the service and the effort that you folks have to put in. So I think that, the, the letter we wrote is pretty self-explanatory. This is the last building on this property that hasn't been rebuilt. Uh, we bought. building on this property that hasn't been rebuilt. We bought the property in 2001. There's four of the 13 units are still occupied by the same people as were in there in 2001 and many of the tenants have been there for more than 10 years. So we don't have a lot of turnover and obviously housing is a shortage, short supply. But we would like to rebuild this building, make it safer, green construction, et cetera. And we'd definitely be willing to answer any questions that you have in regard to what our plan is.
Okay. Any questions? I have one question. There's, first of all, I think, I think, you know, your plans have been well put together and, and it looks, this is going to conform with your other two buildings so that it becomes, you know, a nice little complex. The one confusion I have though is on your elevations, on the second floor, on the elevations, it appears that you have little pop-outs where you've got those little gable elements. And there's no indication on the floor plans of those, nor are there indications on the opposing elevations of their projections. So I'm just trying to understand what they are.
We'll have the powers to be step up and answer this question.
My name's Mary Sykes. I'm an architect in St. Helena. And what we had planned to do, it was really to give a shadow line. And so what we're planning to do is more or less just put like an extra layer of plywood or something, just to give it enough thickness to create a shadow line. We were just trying to create more interest on that side of the building.
I see. So, okay.
It's really just an architectural.
So it's essentially still flush?
It's still flush. It's just kind of an added thickness at that area.
Okay. All right. That answers my question. And I'm assuming because this, we, the color representations we get are always atrocious. We'll blame the city's Xerox machine for that. I'm assuming that your colors are going to be conforming with what is already on the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Who I've known for many years and has a great assistant. I'm going to blame them for the blue doors. Those colors could be, you know, adjudicated in another manner.
I like the blue doors.
But we'd like to be able to at least make it look so you could see what it was going to look like when we did it. But the color would be similar to the front building and the laundry room building, which are both the same. I would call it a mustard yellow color, but not bright.
Okay. Well, you know, when Aunt Martha comes to visit, you can say, we live at the blue door.
The intent was to kind of, there's two different colors on that site. So the idea is to kind of come where, somewhere in the middle there, but then repaint all of the metal rails and stuff so everything is black to kind of tie the whole thing together.
So, good, good. All right. No other questions? Would anyone else like to speak? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Thoughts on the variances?
I'm not concerned with the, the minor requests that are being asked of us. I understand that parking is always a concern, but so is housing. And so we, in this case, if we want an upgraded, nice, clean, safe building, there's not enough room for both to coexist.
And I'll take a slightly less non-conforming any day.
Yeah, I happen to like, you know, smaller front setbacks and things in higher density areas. It just, you know, in a sense gives a little more of a cosmopolitan feeling, but I don't really have an issue with that. And I think that looking, I mean, I sort of looked critically at the parking and went, okay, what's another way to solve this puzzle? And I concluded that there wasn't another way to solve the puzzle. So no matter what you did, you still end up with three spaces. And I think that's three spaces that aren't there now. So I don't really have a problem with it. So would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving design review application, DR 2019-9, and variance request, VA 2019-3.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. I think you've, you're going to be a vast improvement.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We're going to round up Commissioner Allen.
And I'd like to get some of the people from Crystal Geyser to stay for our, because we said they didn't want to.
All right. Is Doug coming back?
Yes. He just went to round him up.
Go down to Hydra?
I don't know.
That door is Suzy's.
Suzy's is closer.
All right. Here, here we have them. As Commissioner Allen comes back, the next issue is matters initiated by commissioners. Does anyone have anything?
I do, for the few peeks, few folks that have stayed here. I just wanted to maybe give an introductory, you know, and say hello and maybe more for you guys than the audience out here. But I wrote a few things and just wanted to share. So thank you for the privilege of serving as a planning commissioner. I take this responsibility very seriously and I look forward to helping represent the city and its constituents to the best of my ability. Thank you to the city council and Mayor Canning and the staff.
Slow down, pal. Slow down. Slow down.
Well, everyone wants to get out of here, right? Everyone wants to go home. And I want to, my, my little girl's at home. I want to go see her. And my, my big girl is at home. My, my older girl is at home. I want to go see her. Then on that note, thank you to my family for supporting me. I love this city. I've lived and or worked here for the past 13 years and I am very optimistic about the future of Calistoga. The only way for this community to be healthy and strong in another five, 10, 15, and 100 years is to invest in moderate, sustainable, and welcome growth. My family and I want to be here for 50-plus years like so many other families before us. I also want to ensure that the opportunity for other young families to move in, to add value and keep this community lively, young, and relevant. Like with full restaurants, successful businesses, new parks, paved streets, sidewalk, sidewalks, community events, it's imperative that the next phase of community development addresses issues that impact families such as limited infant childcare, affordable housing, and aging infrastructure. With that intention, I'm motivated to sustain and improve the quality of life in the community for the benefit of my daughter, her peers, and the community at large. Our family actively participates in everything this town has to offer, the parks, the events, the restaurants, farmer's market, concert in the park, moving the park, the pool, organized sports, et cetera. We are very busy. The prior commission, along with the city council, did a lot of things right and I hope we will continue to make decisions to build on the recent successes that will enable a growing, healthy, vibrant community, which also means a healthy balance sheet, which I applaud the city leadership for accomplishing over the past eight years. We need a healthy bank account in order to properly serve our residents and thankfully the city has that now. What I hope to contribute to this commission is a perspective from a young-ish father raising a family in Calistoga. As part of this commission, I will do my best to ensure that Calistoga is the right place for families and residents of all backgrounds, all backgrounds, to live, work, play, and grow. I'm around town a lot, especially on the weekends. So for those of you that are listening, do not hesitate to stop and chat with me about your thoughts about the future of the city, especially as it relates to the planning commission items. Thank you for listening and I look forward to joining this commission in 2020 and beyond.
Bravo.
Pat, are you waiting to take his picture?
Yes.
Why don't, why don't you, uh...
Actually, I would like the 3D, 2D, pornic people, like.
Well, do, can we?
Wait, we're almost over. We're almost done.
So we're almost done. All right. Director's report.
Yes. So Jay was deleted. Director's report. I don't really have anything unless you haven't heard that I'm retiring on March 31st. So if you've been living under a rock.
Just as a follow-up, we will have items for the next meeting.
Okay.
A number of items.
All right.
Okay.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're adjourned.